Welcome to the April 8th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the governor's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Tonight's public meeting of the Falmouth zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting is being televised via Falmouth Community Television. And the real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals. Utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application allows users to view the meeting and participate in public comment by sending either live comments or typed questions to the chair using the chat function. For the Zoom login instructions, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/zba. I'll introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Horry. I'm the chair of the board. Ken Foreman is the vice chair. Bob Dugan is the board's clerk. Ed Van Kuren is a full voting member. Scott Solinsky is a full voting member. Mary Berry is an associate member and James Morris is an associate member as well. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator. Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for the night. And we do have a few people helping us out technically. That would be Justin Shanahan and Adriana Pantano from the Falmouth IT department. And our friends at FCTV are helping us stream live. So thank you all. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town. And we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and from the public. And to also allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file. Such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. And time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should only be directed at the project itself. And we also ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or an opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. And the chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. And to participate in public comment, again, you can download the Zoom virtual software for remote access. That link is available at www.falmouthma.gov/zba. And at the appropriate times of the evening during the separate hearings, we will open it up to public comment. Just ask you to click the raised hand icon at that appropriate time. And once you are elevated, we ask you to please provide your name and address for the record. The board will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision. By motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. Then the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And for board discussion and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approval of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Okay, so turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment, three continuations, three new public hearings, and a few items on our open meeting agenda. So first up for the night is public comment. This sort of public comment is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if you do have public comment regarding applications that we will hear tonight, you're in the right spot, just stand by. But if anyone has public comment for anything that is not on the agenda tonight, go ahead and click the raised hand icon utilizing the Zoom app and we can elevate you in a moment. All right, not seeing anyone. Moving on to our continuations, up first, we have the continuation of application 61-20 Echo Land Development LLC, Zero Percival Road, Lot 4 in T-Ticket. And for this, I believe we have, do we have Mr. Montero? Sure, if we could get Mr. Montero elevated, please.
While he's being elevated, Mr. Chairman, we did get a correspondence in that they are asking for a continuance. It does state that the 40B development, which was scheduled for the public hearing on April 8th tonight, that the new site plan is not yet completed, nor has the property been staked in time for the new hearing. So accordingly, they will be, they are not ready to properly present the plan and the address to the board members' questions and concerns. And we'll be looking for a continuing date. We will need an extension signed by the applicant, which could be mailed by the administrator to them. But we will need to have agreement on an extension date.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. And Mr. Montero, it looks like, looks like we have you. There you are. How are you doing for audio, Mr. Montero?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay.
All right. So you're asking for a continuance. And I guess in exchange for that, we will need you to sign an extension beyond the 180 days allowed by Massachusetts law.
Okay.
All right.
My office or would that be mailed to?
Don't want to speak on behalf of Noreen, but I believe she can get that to you, Noreen.
Sure. So we can send that to you directly or to your project rep or both of you, whoever, whichever is more convenient.
Do it, Bob, please.
Okay. So we're going to continue to May 20th.
All right. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Yeah. So that the applicant isn't ready to proceed this evening, I will make a motion to continue to May 20th.
Seconded. All right. Motion was made by Bob for the continuance and seconded by Ed. And the voting members on this are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Solinsky. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Thank you, Ken. Scott?
Scott Solinsky, aye.
And TJ Horry, aye. So it passes unanimously. This hearing is continued to May 22nd. Mr. Montero, thank you for your time tonight.
May, May 20th.
I'm sorry, May 20th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have the continuation of application 7-21 Sullivan, 345 Grand Ave in Falmouth. And I believe Attorney Clawer is representing the applicant. If he could be elevated, please. And the voting members on this project are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Solinsky. Attorney Clawer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clawer and I'm here tonight representing Larry and Valerie Sullivan, the owners of 345 Grand Avenue. As you may recall, they are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling, which requires a special permit under section 243(c) and 24069(e). Since our last meeting, we did revise the site plan to correctly reflect the proposed structure and setbacks. The minor changes to that site plan did not affect the setbacks. And the proposed lot coverage by structure is still lower than what exists today. I also met with the homeowner, the engineer, and the builder to discuss the retaining wall. And the owner has determined that he'd like to keep the existing retaining wall as is. They don't intend to replace it. So that site plan, that revised site plan was submitted. And I did inquire as to the variance that was issued by the board of health. But I do not believe that Mr. McGann has written it up as of yet, but they did vote to approve it. And as I mentioned before, they approved the five bedroom system. That's being shown on the plan. As a brief recap to familiarize yourselves with the project again, this is presently a five bedroom, single family dwelling with a footprint of 1,676 square feet. It's non-conforming in a number of ways. Front yard setback, 2.6 feet, side yard setback of five feet, rear yard setback of six inches, and the lot coverage by structure of 36.1 where 20 is allowed by right, 25 by special permit. The applicants have proposed to raise the existing dwelling and to rebuild a new five bedroom home. This would result in the footprint remaining essentially the same, slight decrease. It's 36.1 to 36%. The front yard setback is minimally improved as well. It's 2.6 to 2.9. The side yard setback remains effectively the same. But the rear yard setback is pretty substantially improved from six inches to 7.7 feet. Overall, the gross floor area of this project doesn't actually increase that much because of the layout of the house. The number of bedrooms will remain the same. And there is a new Title V system, which has been approved by the Board of Health. Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions, although because of the slight changes to the site plan that will need to be modified. And a waiver of the demolition delay bylaw has been issued by the Historical Commission. So under 243(c), the threshold question is, is what's proposed substantially more detrimental than what exists? And as considerations, we're supposed to think about whether it creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this case, I think all of those are true. There's no new non-conformity created. The number of the existing non-conformities are improved or have no effect on them. There's no effect on the views and vistas of the public. And it is consistent with the neighborhood as we set forth on our lot comparison worksheet. Under 24069(e), the board's asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on properties, the impacts on views and vistas in public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Again, here, there's no impact to the views and vistas in public ways. The area has many similarly tall structures. And this is located toward, in the way that the public would not be looking effectively. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. It's a new septic that's replacing existing cesspools. So it's actually an improvement. And as to the size and fit with the neighborhood, we did submit that lot comparison worksheet. And as I mentioned, we looked at 28 properties within a 300-foot radius. Of those, 23 of them have larger footprints and 21 have larger gross floor areas. This property, as proposed, remains one of the smaller houses in the neighborhood. It's certainly appropriate with those nearby properties. This represents what we think is a significant improvement over the existing conditions. It replaces the age, septic system in a house that's insignificant to repair, both cosmetically and structurally. It doesn't create any new dimensional non-conformities. It improves existing non-conformities, including front, side, and rear yard setbacks. And there's a decrease to lot coverage by structure and lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. As I've gone over, it is in character with the surrounding homes and the size and scope. And even as proposed, remains one of the smaller homes. This project meets the requirements of 243(c), 24069(e), and 24216. I believe that this board can and should issue a special permit. And I would be happy to address any questions that you might have. I do want to note, I believe Mr. Barcelli is here this evening as well. And I know he has a hard stop of seven. So if there are questions that are best suited for him, we should probably address those.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Clawer. We will turn it to board questions. And is Mr. Barcelli with you or is he a separate?
I think he'd need to be elevated, please.
All right. If he is out there, if we could elevate him. And while we're trying to do that, we will turn it to board questions. Bob, anything?
Mr. Clawer, so what is the current height of the existing structure?
The current height of the structure is, it is 23.8 feet. And as proposed, it will be 33 feet 4 inches.
So where there is a difference in height being proposed, the one thing you didn't discuss was impacts on shadow. How much, how far is the house behind from the current structure? What's the distance from the?
I don't know the exact distance. I mean, it is the heights. These are fairly tight homes, fairly tight lots. We haven't, we haven't done a formal shadow study. But it's, you know, this, this house, this, this proposed house sits lower than the house behind it. It's kind of been a bit of a delve. And I believe Ms. Welcome, who's the butter, is, is making comment in the chat. But she notes that in some places, it's as close as five feet. I would note that the half story, the top story is significantly smaller than the lower stories below it. It is not a full, a full story as we often see with those half stories.
So do we have anything, even though it's a smaller story, that, you know, that third floor section? Did you have anything on shadow on that at all? Since it's so much higher than the current?
No, we haven't prepared a formal shadow study.
And this is just a curious question. And I don't know if anything could be done about it all anyways. But I noticed that you've got the two AC compressors in the generator and back. And that's probably the best placement for them. Is there anything that can be done surrounding any of those to help impact noise? Because there's only, say, five foot space between those and the jays? Because it almost seems like there's an echo chamber there anyways. And once you add any kind of loud sound in that area, it's pretty much going to be emphasized more than it normally would just because of the location.
Sure. That's, that's a fair question. I think that could probably be addressed with some appropriate landscaping, some bushes in the area. But I don't know that specifically.
That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Bob. Ed, anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Mary. Ken?
So you submitted a new site plan. It shows some increase in the mitigation planting. Are there other changes on that compared to the one we had before?
Sure. The biggest change there, the, if you, and it's hard to see, the balconies on the second.
I'm going to share my screen.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Okay. Kevin, you can narrate and I'll walk them through it. You should be seeing my site plan now?
Sure, we have it up.
Yep. We added a balcony here, second story balcony. That was not on the original site plan. And we also added a small balcony projection right here, which is getting lost. You can see the word balcony, but it gets lost in some other, some other labeling. Because of those two, because of these projections under the Falmouth Conservation mitigation planting requirements, it required us to expand the mitigation and give, provide more native planting. So the original plan only showed it in this location and it got expanded along the frontage some more.
So the dash line is what shows the extent of the balcony, is that right?
Yes, this dash line. And then if you really zoom in tight on here, you'll see the dash line right there. Gets lost in this words waterproof membrane, but it returns right here.
And that's on the second floor?
Yes, so there's daylight under it. It's a cantilever.
Right. And so that fourth, the four foot four setback is from the edge of the balcony?
Yes. And it's, it's greater than the closest points of the existing house, which is 2.6 right here.
Right, right. And the previous structure was in the front yard there. How far?
On this plan, if you look, you can see that the, the existing house for reference is shown in a red line work.
It's also 2.6.
2.6 from this corner to here. And the proposed covered porch is 2.9. And then the cantilever balcony is 4.4.
So it does extend a little closer than the old house in terms of that particular location.
That location, yes, but not closer than the closest point. Yes.
Okay. All right. You clarified questions I had. So thanks.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Ken. James?
I have no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. Scott?
Attorney Claw, what, do you have a calculation on the increased living area in the second and third floors from the original?
So our lot comparison worksheet does show shows current gross building area of 2599 and proposed of 2797. So the, the increase in gross floor is actually pretty small because of the fact much of the house is composed of open decks, balconies. So the first floor has a large open deck area, as does the second floor has two large balconies that we just discussed. So the actual increase in the gross floor area is pretty minimal.
So that third, that third floor, is that open from the second floor cathedral or is that, is that?
No, if you, and I'd be happy to share my plans here. Bear with me, let me just get it up. So the so there is a stairway up and it's, they have it labeled as an office slash lookout. And then there's a TV room that, that's open here as well.
That bathroom was on that third floor as well?
Yep, small powder room up there as well.
And that's calculated in the calculations you just gave me for?
Yes, I believe so. I didn't do those calculations myself. They were provided to me by the engineer, by the architect.
I'm sorry. So we, we don't know for sure or we do know what it is?
Those are the numbers I was given by the architect. But I've always discussed with them that we include basically exterior walls in for, for calculating gross floor area.
All right. I'm sorry. Maybe I'm not asking the question right.
I, it is my understanding, yes, sir, that that is, that is calculated in. I did not do the math myself because it was prepared by the architect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. And most of my questions have already been addressed. But Attorney Claw, I don't know if we've ever talked about parking for this application.
So there is, there is some space in the driveway in the front yard that can be used for staging and parking. It is a tight lot. There's no question about it. And it is a, it is a tight area. I think that's true for, for everything in heights. But there is, there is places that can be used for staging and that will be an H20 system.
If I could supplement that, the parking, the driveway is generally in the same exact location. In fact, if you look closely, I'm sorry, there's so many lines. But the outline of the existing driveway is where I'm highlighting with the mouse. It starts right here. So they basically barely got two cars here. We're proposing to extend it right up in, there's actually a garage. So now there's room for a car in the garage and two cars here. So there's less congestion than for the proposed driveway than the current situation.
Thank you, Mr. Barcelli. Any follow-up questions from the board before we turn it over to public comment? All right. Public comment if there, and I do see someone typed into the chat, so I'll, I'll announce that in a minute. But if anyone has any question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon using the Zoom virtual software. And we will elevate you in a moment. All right. Sarah Welcome typed into the chat. She said, "In some spots, it's literally five feet from my house. My only concern is that the front of the house will now be two stories, where it is currently only one story now. That noise won't be a concern for me. Everyone has stuff in their backyards. The existing house is only one story in the front." And again, that's from Sarah Welcome. And if anyone else has any comment, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. All right, not seeing anyone else. Mr. Clawer, I don't think we've heard from Ms. Welcome before. Do you care to address any of her comments? And you're muted.
I do believe Ms. Welcome spoke at the last meeting. That said, you know, the, the house is going to be larger than it currently is. It's going to be up in size. I think that the applicant tried to have a pretty tasteful design in order to, you know, not create, you know, block structure that's going to obscure views. But unfortunately, there is some increase in the size and that's what's happening.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Clawer. Any other follow-up? Go ahead, Bob.
Just a question. Is it possible to ask the butter a question?
We can try if.
So if she could hear, so my only question was, is that when we go over these bylaws, you know, shadow isn't, is an issue that we have to look at. And there is that, you know, third floor vestibule. So where she is a close to butter, my only question would be, does she have any issue that her property will be affected at all from shadow from that, from the higher height in front? Since we don't have a shadow study and the properties are so close together.
Can you guys hear us?
We can hear you. Looks like you've been elevated, Ms. Welcome. Go right ahead.
I don't have any shadow concern. I don't think they need to do it. It's just the way the street curves, you know, and there now being two stories and three in some cases. I am more concerned about, I mean, it's definitely going to impede my view. But I don't want to see them have to go through a shadow study. I'm not that concerned about that piece of it.
Thank you, Ms. Welcome.
Thank you.
And for the record, Ms. Welcome, what's your address?
One Fairmount. So I'm the one there. And that, my house does sit higher than their house. But like I said, the way the street curves right now in the front, that's a single story. And it's going to be two stories now, you know, in that same footprint and a third. So, you know, that's definitely going to have impact on, you know, on view. But I don't think the shadow thing is an issue.
Understood. Thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right, seeing none. Have we heard everything that we need?
Mr. Chair, if I could, just as we sometimes do, I always welcome a chance for the board to have discussion prior to closing. I just think it leads to a better overall outcome, especially with projects like this.
Sure. So we'll, we can leave it open briefly for comments. Does anyone want to start us off?
Yes, I'll just start up briefly. And it was nice to hear from the butter where the butter doesn't have any issue themselves with any shadow. I wouldn't have any concern at this point with shadow where, but she's probably more familiar with the property. I do think because these are tight lots and, and I know that people are trying to make the maximum they can of the houses. I, I don't think you need that additional projection on the front balcony. The original plan that we did, did show a balcony deck there that didn't project out. There still was usable space on that balcony. So that's something that. So that's something that that I wouldn't be in favor of the front balcony, and I guess the only other issue that, you know, we would discuss later on is that you know, they would like to keep the retaining wall, which makes sense in front, and normally when we do this because they would have to try to get a license from the selectmen. We've been asking for them to do those applications and get an answer to receive the license prior to getting the building permit, and I know that we did that also in Woods Hole. I don't know if that process has started or not yet, maybe where this is still open, Mr. Claw, can let us know if they've actually started the process at all, asking for a license for the you know, for the the front rock wall. The property itself is a five bedroom is going to be tight for cars, but I think they probably used it that way so far. And the only plus I can see there right now is that they are adding a garage, which doesn't currently exist. So that does allow you to pull in at least one extra car. But that's 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 all I have to comment on.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Bob, to address those, I'd be happy to address those those questions and concerns. Regarding the balcony, that was actually an error. The balcony hasn't changed. We're not asking the balcony to be larger. It just wasn't shown on on the original plan because it does extend past the the sidewall of the house over the overhang. That wasn't reflected on the original site plan. There's been no change to the overall design. It just wasn't reflected appropriately the first time. I just want to clarify that that wasn't something that was recently changed. As to the license, I have been in touch with the Board of Selectmen's Office. I did reach out to Phyllis Downey earlier this week, and we have no issue applying for that. And as to parking, we into the garage, there is also a lengthening of the driveway, so there'll be more space for cars on the driveway in addition to the garage. And and I should note that that the Sullivans actually have a small parcel around the corner that is just a garage, which is used towards this lot.
Thank you, Attorney Claw. Any other members of the board wish to provide any comment before we close the hearing?
I would just say that, you know, they they had a very tight lot. They've managed to build a significantly improved house for the utilization of the owner and improve almost all the setbacks, at least a little tiny bit, and even reduce the lot coverage just a little tiny bit. So I think under our bylaw, they're they're they're, you know, they're doing the best they can to conform given the preexisting use, so. I'm in favor.
Thank you, Ken. And Ken, I tend to agree with you. I think it's always a challenge whenever we're reviewing these projects, especially houses in the heights. It's a known area for very tight plots, this one in particular. And I think what really does it for me is that the butters don't really have any objection here. Ed, how do you feel?
Let's get on with it and do it.
Very good. Scott, how do you feel?
Let's vote.
All right.
I'd make a motion to close.
So, Ken?
Motion to close by Ken and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Scott?
Absolinsky, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So the hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. And how would the board like to proceed?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would I'd be willing to go, you know, forward with it. The only comment I would have is there's a lot of things to be put in here between conservation, engineering, licensing info, so I could start the process of of doing it with conditions, but I would feel more comfortable if the administrator drafted the positive motion. So it has everything in it, and then at our next meeting, we could just vote to approve once we get the the full draft.
I think that's a good idea, Bob. It's a it's a small lot, but there's a lot going on, so I just I just want to make sure that we catch everything.
Yeah, the one thing I would recommend is that we get an as-built plan here. It's everything is as we've all noted very tight, so.
All right, Bob, do you want to start us off then?
Yeah, so then I would make a motion to instruct the administrator to draft a positive approval that we can vote on at the next meeting, and we can start with a few. So just for the bylaw section, so 240-3C, 240-609E, 240-216. I think we should put in the findings that it is a tight lot, but that's an issue that just happens in the heights. They are approving access to parking by the length in the driveway and also of the garage. The property does have a retaining wall that will need a license by the Board of Selectmen, and the applicant has said they will go forward getting a license of asking for a license for that. They would like to keep that retaining wall. There were revisions to the plan regarding that balcony and also showing that there will be the AC compressors and the generator in that backyard space. We did have testimony by the director of butter that they didn't have any concerns regarding shadow. The height of the actual structure is taller than the one that stood there previously. We want to list all the, you know, all the setbacks, the differences in the lot coverage. There is slight improvements. Also put in there that the they did get a variance from the Health Department regarding the five bedroom system that was approved. We're just waiting for a copy of that. We want to make a notation of that. Also want to notate the comments from the Conservation Department and Engineering. It's increasing the utilization of the home for the family. Also add in the finding that it was noted by applicants council that they do own a separate parcel that does have a garage on. They also use that for additional parking. There were, you can mention that the butter did say that it would have some effect on the view, but for the size of the home where they're putting it or didn't feel it was a great effect.
All right, anything else for findings? How about conditions?
Like Ken said, we would need an as-built. We'd have to put per revised plans condition on it on everything regarding conservation, and I think in this case, Noreen Conservation is the one handling the erosion sediment controls. Make sure we have all the conditions from the referrals from engineering. Make sure we condition it on that they'll be seeking a license from the Board of Selectmen to keep the retaining wall at front, and that license is to be received prior to getting a building permit. We're going to want conditions in there regarding the hours. I know it's a tight lot and a tight area, so there probably should be something in there that they have to I don't know if you put regulate with the police department, but you know, they're going to have to do some kind of parking on that street. I don't see how they can get around it on Fairmount or the other ones, so they'll have to put some kind of a schedule on how they're handling that.
We might want to restrict it to Fairmount, obviously not.
Oh, that's a good idea. Fairmount versus the other one. I just I just don't know on Fairmount what maybe Noreen you can find about the engineering when they do the plans, but some of those height street are, you know, barely one car passable, so I just don't know if they park just on Fairmount, if there's any other issues with fire department or anything with passability.
All right.
Has that motion been seconded?
I don't think it was.
I'm happy to to provide the second.
Thank you, Ken. I was going to suggest that. All right, anything else in terms of helping Noreen draft the decision?
I think that's pretty much most of the stuff to cover.
All right, so that was a motion by Bob directing Noreen to draft a positive decision.
Before you finish that, TJ, what was the total height?
Don't have that in front of me.
The total height is 32.4, and it's going to 32.4 from 23.8.
I thought it was 33.4. It is.
Okay.
And it was 23.8.
23.8.
So if we could also just get a height started framing?
Good idea. All right, so we all set now? All right, so that was a motion by Bob to direct Noreen to draft a positive decision regarding this application. It was seconded by Ken. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Scott?
Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, passes unanimously. Attorney Claw, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We we will have that for April 22nd.
Great, thank you.
All right, up next we have application 10-21, Snowman, 25 Depot Ave in Falmouth. And if we could elevate Ms. Snowman, please. And the voting members on this project are myself, Ken Forman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Zalinski. All right, Ms. Snowman, you've been elevated, so you just have to turn on your video and your microphone.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Mary Lois Snowman, appearing before you regarding property at 25 Depot Ave in Falmouth, Massachusetts. As you may remember, this is a continuance for my application to change use of this from mixed use to multifamily under special permit uses 240-51. When I appeared before you last time, there were a couple of loose ends that you requested tidying up. One was you hadn't received the site and septic plan. It had just been completed that day. So that has now been submitted to the board. There was also to show that the the plan was going to be moved to four bedrooms versus five per results of the septic. And then finally, there was some question about whether the the building had been prior to 1980 been used as a dwelling. I had submitted, I think it was a census record, was a little bit indecipherable. I did discover from the Falmouth Historic Commission that this building is on the Falmouth on, excuse me, Massachusetts Registry of Historic Homes. It was built in 1880-ish by an Eli Swift who lived there with his family and then at one point moved a barn to create the Swift's Meat Market, which was next door, and then turned into the bookstore. So a little bit of interesting history of of this building. Clearly used as a dwelling prior to 1980. If there are any other questions that I could answer about this project, I'm happy to do so.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Snowman. So we will turn it to board questions. Bob, do you have anything?
So, Snowman, I know you sent the historical that said it was used as a dwelling at one point, but it was converted. It was a single family dwelling, so it wasn't multiple, and then at some point it was used just for business use.
When we purchased, when we purchased it, it was a mixed use. There was an apartment upstairs, and there were there was business use downstairs.
And what year was that?
I knew you were going to ask me. It was after 1980.
I did have one question regarding the existing site plan. If you look at the existing site plan, there are the first two parking spaces that you show project closer to the shared, you know, one vehicle with entrance and exit that share that little Eastman section. And it it does not currently exist that way. Currently, those cars are that parking is pretty much up against where that porch area is. And it also it also depicts a set of stairs with a walkway going around the back of the building. That also does not exist right now. You have the parking on that side up against the stairs. So do you know why they may have put that on the existing site plan? Is that something that you're proposing to change?
The stairs in the back?
Well, the 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 actual the actual layout of the parking with the green space, the stairway and that large walkway, they just don't exist. It's not a current existing plan. So what exists right now in that back section, when you come out those stairs, you step right onto where the parking is of those, the last four cars. The plan you're submitting shows that there's this green buffer space that has a wide sidewalk that kind of goes around the building to the back entrance. So that currently isn't there. And then off of that front porch where the first two cars are, it shows again a large green space which pushes those parking spaces closer to that shared access road. And that currently isn't something that exists. Right now, those parking spaces are but almost directly against the balconies, against the porch. So was that meant to be something that would propose changes versus existing?
I'm I'm confused about what green space. There is some green space at the rear of the building. Is that is that the green space that you're mentioning?
Yeah, so on, so you submitted so on plan that you submitted that shows the parking, and this says proposal for three unit residential. It's actually marked at the top, S2.1 is the page. It says it was prepared on January 5th, 2020.
So that was, I I think what you're referring to is an original site plan that did not take into account proposed use and did not include the entire gravel parking area in the lot.
Okay, so when I was
Existing conditions plan had originally been prepared, only counted two parking spaces within the gravel area.
So I guess what I'm what I'm trying to say is the existing plan that you're showing is depicted shows a large walkway that goes around the back of the building in green space between that walkway and the parking spaces, and on the porch, on the side porch where those first two spaces are, that actually come out further into the the parking lot. It shows a large green space. Neither of those actually exist because I was there today.
There is a green. So I I would love to see point out, there is a green space coming off of a side porch as exists. You might have seen a picnic bench there.
This is so this is in front of the car parking spaces.
There's.
You know, you know, it'll do, it might help. Let me, I'll have the, I'll have Ashley in the office maybe share the screen, and that might give a better idea what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm having, I'm sorry.
That's good.
She trying to do that now, Bob?
Yeah, she's going to try to pull it up.
All right.
Um, there, so this was, okay. The original, you said submitted in January.
All right, so we got it pulled up. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ashley, can you go down to number nine? Okay, so on number nine, actually go down again. It's that one that shows the three photos with the green space. Back the other way.
So the one with the pictures, Bob?
Yeah, right there. So so on that, so on that plan, where you see those first two cars, and there's that green space in front of them. Those parking spaces currently are in in the same location as the other ones. So there there, those cars actually go much closer to the building than they're showing on the site plan. The green space that is shown there doesn't come out past even the porch, and to the right of that where you see that that gray walkway that's in front of those other steps going around. That walkway and that green space in front of those cars doesn't exist. Those cars actually park right almost against the building where those stairs are. So I guess my question was, was that something that you were proposing as a change?
No, I I I I just think I, 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 I just think, I don't know why that's on the original site plan except that green space. I'm wondering if that's where the big rhododendron bush is and it just is not presented here at, at, at the appropriate scale. It's just a much smaller, and you're right, those cars do pull farther up. The walkway to the back is just a series of stepping stones, there's not an actual walkway to the back steps. That, I thought that's the green area you meant, that is all green. But no, we are not proposing a, a walkway or a green area. Where one doesn't exist.
I, I guess that's the only questions I have right now, just do the rest in discussion.
All right, thank you, Bob. Uh, let's see, Ed, any questions?
No, I have nothing this time.
Thank you, Ed. Mary, anything?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. James?
I have no questions.
Thank you, James. Ken?
Nothing.
Nothing? Oh, okay, you muted yourself, got it, thank you. Scott?
Ms. Snowman, you had mentioned that you, when you purchased this, it was under mixed use. That was a permitted apartment when you bought the property?
I, I don't know. We bought it from the Falmouth Housing Corporation. So, I mean, we didn't use it as an apartment, we didn't, we've used it as an office building since we purchased it.
So, so you never checked to see if there was, what the permit status was when you bought it, when, as mixed use?
Well, no, because we knew it was in a zone that could be covered for mixed use for lots of different uses and we didn't have any intent to use it as an apartment. So there was no reason for me to check if it was permitted. And, and as much as we bought it from the Falmouth Housing Corp, I would have assumed that it was permitted. And I would have assumed that my attorney, my closing attorney would have done whatever kind of due diligence would have been necessary for closing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, but Ms. Snowman, you did say that there was at least one, uh, one apartment unit in the building when you purchased it, right?
There was just one apartment unit in the upstairs. The downstairs was a hodgepodge of single room offices that were used by a group of psychotherapists, I believe.
Interesting, okay. Any follow-up questions from the board before we turn it to public comment?
Um, yeah, let me, let me ask about that proposed, you did propose some improvements to the exterior, I think to the railing on the steps. And any other improvements like that?
Well, well, we would like to improve the windows that if you can see the addition with the flat roof above it. Those windows look to be like mid-century modern. And so we'd like to replace those with the divided light historic windows. We also wanted to put a small, uh, the, replace the back stairs and then a small roof deck over that flat rubber roof area. Again, with condition being approved by the Historic Commission. And then other than that, we're really not doing any changes to the exterior except moving one of the doorways. There's two currently on the side and we want to move one to the rear of the building.
Uh, okay, and so you're gonna end up with three apartments, right?
Three apartments.
One?
The upstairs would be
Two one bedrooms and one two-bedroom?
That's correct.
Well, that's very symmetrical. Thanks.
All right, so we will turn it to public comment if anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project. Go ahead and click the raised hand icon using the Zoom app and we will elevate you in a moment. All right, not seeing anyone for public comment, so back to the board. Any follow-up questions?
Maybe just some discussion if there's no questions.
Sure, we can have discussion before we close the hearing. Bob, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, so, so just going by the application itself, so the application is applying under two forty fifty-one, A two and A five. So the first thing that we have to go over is we have to decide, we have to show, or they have to show evidence that this was used as a dwelling, you know, consistently prior to nineteen eighty. So they do have the originally, original home was historic and way back the original home was a single, you know, single-family historic home. We have testimony tonight by the applicant that they did purchase it prior to one eighty and when they purchased it, they converted it over to office, office space. So it wasn't being used at that point as a dwelling unit at all. You have to look is the size of the lot suitable for a remodel into into residential space. The one thing that's unique about this parcel is that this parcel has a very narrow shared easement entrance and exit, it only fits one vehicle in and out at a time. And that, that entrance and exit serves the surrounding properties which are business use. There's an architect office there, it looks like there's an attorney's office, or I don't know if it's an accountant next door. And then it was serving this as a business use. I don't know if a remodel into residential is suitable with the access points on this property and the surrounding business use. Because you also have to look at that there wouldn't be in any any negative impact on losing business property. And most of that area is business property. And I understand the applicant right now with COVID and stuff, it makes sense that they'd like to go over some kind of a change. I personally don't believe because the way the lot was laid out, it's suitable for a model. Then you have to look at the density. And the bylaw is very specific, you cannot exceed six units per acre. When you do the calculations out for the very small lot that this is, that brings it down to if you converted it to one dwelling unit, not multiple dwelling units. We've been very specific in the past on even residential properties when there were other buildings where they wanted to use those as multifamily on what we require. And we have been very specific that we need to know what the use was closest to the dates that are in the bylaws. And we usually ask for affidavits of who lived at the property, if they can show any kind of utility space and that kind of information. And unfortunately here, because the property was converted to business use and wasn't consistently used as dwellings, we just don't have any of that information. So as far as the application is, unless there's a different bylaw, this project just, it doesn't qualify under the criteria that we're given to look at. I do have a little bit of an issue with the site plan, when we're looking at a site plan, it doesn't actually show what the existing conditions are. I don't think that has anything to do with the applicant at all, I don't think they were trying to show us something that didn't exist. I think it was probably just an error on the plan and I would accept it's an error on the plan. But if you're gonna even look at a plan like this and you're moving two parking spaces out further into the lot, if that was something that was proposed, that entrance that you're coming in out of right now with the cars against the building only gives you five feet to get into that easement area. And you have to back up directly into it or into the adjacent, the adjacent parking area. So there's even an issue on that. As far as changes and material changes to the building, I know that if this was ever converted, you'd need the second means of address. There is a large enlargement of a deck on the second floor. I don't think that would be allowed, I think you'd be allowed the stairwell. But that's another issue where the bylaw significantly states about any changes you're doing to the building. And the historic record was great information. The historic record just doesn't back up how this building would qualify under this bylaw that it's being applied for. So if we were to try to say that yes, we would like to approve it under this bylaw, right now, we can't prove the use. It's questionable whether the, the lot, the size of the lot and the layout of the lot in this particular case is suitable for this kind of remodel. I think you could make an argument that it is a current business zone and there's not much business zone in that area. So losing a business zone property in that area could have a negative impact on business use. I mean, there's a lot of people that would like office space nowadays. And it definitely does not qualify under the density criteria, it would qualify as a single family. You know, I just think, I just think those are all issues that, that just particularly work against it. The other thing the board would have to think about is if there was a way that this did fit under another bylaw for multifamily use. Usually when we're trying to do these conversions and we're doing dwelling units, we do try to look to some kind of affordability if it's possible. It's not a general residence district, so we don't have that opportunity to put an affordable restriction on it. But there is no way to cap what the rents would be. There's also no way to say that once this was converted to multiple units, that this property cannot be condominiumized and sold off individually. So I just think that's just an additional concern. But, you know, if somebody could, could tell me how it meets all the criteria of the bylaw that we're presented with. But I just don't see any, any evidence of it right now.
May I address some of those first, or?
If, if you don't mind, Ms. Snowman, if we could just have some board discussion and then we'll allow you to respond, no problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Because I'll, I'll, I'll jump in. I have a little bit of interpret, little difference of interpretation than Bob. Uh, I think under two forty fifty-one, five, A five, I'm sorry, all you need to do is look at the last line. I, I don't think the application meets it due to the fact that, due to the size, six units per acre. But if you're looking at A two, which is completely separate, I, I think the application is good, I think we can approve it. Conversion of a dwelling in existence, we heard testimony. By nineteen eighty, we heard testimony that at least part of it was a dwelling. Definition of the dwelling, by the way, is a building or portion thereof used for residential, residential occupancy. Uh, so we did hear that at least one portion of it was being sold, I'm, I'm sorry, was being used as a residential dwelling unit. Ms. Snowman's provided enough evidence that prior to nineteen eighty, it was certainly used for residential use. And I understand in that part of town, that zoning, that there was some mixed use going on and most recently exclusively offices. Go looking further at A two. You can go up to four dwelling units if the conversion involves no material change to the exterior of the existing dwelling. Uh, and if the ZBA determines that the size of the dwelling and the lot is suitable for remodeling. I think with the size and the amount of bedrooms that are proposed, I think it's fine. Uh, and just on another note, with these smaller units in town, it's definitely something that we do need. Town certainly in need of that sort of housing. I think it's in a good area of town, it's next to the bus depot, it's located near downtown. So I, just these sorts of applications, I think we should be encouraging. Uh, and I don't think I'm bending too much on fifty-one, A two, I, I think it's there. I don't think it's there under A five.
So we just, sorry to interrupt, but we did have some comment from town council. And I think what they were trying to indicate was that under fifty-one, A two, where you have conversion of an existing dwelling. I don't think there's language that says it has to be consistently used as a dwelling, but just that it needed to be a dwelling as of nineteen eighty. And I think that differentiates with number five, which is where you're talking about conversion and you've had circumstances where people have office buildings that were constructed, you know, post nineteen eighty, so they were clearly not a house. So therefore, that applicability for the number of units per acre would apply to, say, an existing office building as opposed to the structure where was a house, they are eligible to have up to four. You know, my understanding that they're looking at three because they have a limited septic and the size of the structure itself. So I rather had the impression from town council that other than, you know, sufficiency of parking or whatever issues that you were looking at, that they felt it could qualify under the fifty-one, A two.
So I just have a question on that, Noreen, so on, so where they're basing it and says that it has to be used as a dwelling as of January of nineteen eighty? And where we have a statement from the applicant tonight that said they purchased it previous to that and they converted the apartment to an office, so it was no longer a dwelling. How would that still comply in nineteen eighty?
Right, so it just, the, the, these dwelling needed to exist as of January first nineteen eighty. And of course, they now have records that show that yes, indeed, it was dwelling as of the eighteen eighties. So they're showing you that, yes, indeed, it was built as a house and that it does precede the date of nineteen eighty.
Okay, so then, so then the actual fact that it wasn't a dwelling at all as of nineteen eighty, January, that wouldn't apply anymore?
That would be my impression. I think it just needed to have been originally built as a house and that it was used as a house. And that probably similar
Prior to nineteen eighty, prior to January.
Prior to, right. And that, you know, similar to, you know, other circumstances, you know, there were, I guess bedrooms that were rented out to people as offices as opposed to a bedroom. But that, you know, as you look at the house and compared to the way it was originally, you know, it's clearly still that house.
So I understand that, so I guess, I guess my question, my question is the phrase that it says, it, this is only for conversion of a dwelling that is in existence on the lot as of January first nineteen eighty. So if as of January first nineteen eighty, it had no long, it was no longer a dwelling. Because previous years to that, they, they changed the use, they went to an office use. That wording still compli, that wouldn't comply then, correct?
Oh, I guess the circumstances, how you kind of navigate through that language.
I think the intent of town meeting was that, look, if you had a house that was existing prior to that date, and you wanted to convert it, you could. But they didn't want people building new houses with the intent of converting in that way. You know, essentially creating new family, new, uh, multifamily on single family, single lots.
Bob, you've got to consider
Aren't we talking about a business district here? Yeah.
Yeah, this all pertains to that.
Business district, Ken.
Right, but there are a lot of, you, you know, the, the town is old. Business district has expanded to include what used to be homes. So
But you said in a residential area.
This is certainly a desperately needed use. We've talked about that in before, you know, that trying to get people to downsize their proposed apartments from two and three-bedroom to one-bedroom. Here, here we have an applicant that's proposing one-bedroom apartments. And I agree, it's right next to the bus stop, couldn't be a better location.
I, I mean, we, we, if I may, we, we grew up in this town and, and there were a lot of mixed-use buildings back then that the doctors lived in them and all of that. That had been converted and back and forth throughout my lifetime, just in that area.
Thank you, Scott. Ed, how do you feel?
I feel that we, I agree with you on reading chapter two forty fifty-one. And I take that, I think we ought to let him do it.
All right, thank you, Ed. Anyone else?
I agree with you, TJ, and I think this is, it's within the housing needs survey and I'm not voting on it. I agree with you, TJ. And I think this is, uh, it's within the housing needs survey and I'm not voting on it, but I would encourage uh, that it be adopted and approved.
Thank you, James. Always appreciate everyone's opinion. All right. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion then?
The, the meeting's still, still open, right? Could we ask the app, just to, I just want a question about rentals, so.
I'm sorry, Ms. Snowman. We didn't, we didn't circle back to you. My apologies.
And, and also if this is converted into three units and they're one bedroom units, what's the anticipated rent and is any of, are any of those rents um, any affordable range?
I, I, I haven't just determined or calculated rents yet. We, we wanted to find out first if we can get approval for this use um, and get a quote for the contracting work that needs to be done. It's very old building. Um, there's going to be quite a bit of rehab interior that will be needed. And I think that'll help sort of drive the decision around the rents. Um, I, I don't know anything about, you know, uh, what do you, low income rent? I just don't, I don't know anything about that.
You know, Noreen, I, I just have a question for Noreen regarding a, a, a condition. And I don't even know if this is honestly legal or not. Um, is it possible when you, when units are approved for rentals? Can you condition those that they can't be condominiumized to be sold separately?
That is a good question. Um, I, I guess that, you know, some of that could certainly be dependent on how the structure is rehabbed. So for example, if you were going to create a condominium, you know, there would be an expectation that each of those units would have a separate water line. They, you know, naturally separate utilities, et cetera. So it, it may not necessarily even be possible for them to do that.
I'm, I'm only asking that question because, and you know, real estate markets change, but right now with the current markets, the ability to profit on selling off individual condos will far ever outweigh any kind of financial gain as keeping something as a rental. It's just that's, it's just the nature of it. And um, if these were to be approved, I would hope that they'd be close enough to an affordable rate. But concern would be you have approved three units. It is able to be condominiumized. And now suddenly you can sell units off for, I mean, I'm just going to throw a number in this, don't hold me to anything, but they're selling off the small individual units now for four hundred thousand a unit. Um, where people are just paying what they want. So I, I see the need as an affordable rental. I just was, what, is, is it possible that on a conversion, they would have to um, transfer the property as a rentable property? And could you condition that it could not be uh, condominiumized for individual sale?
Well, I would like to add, if you don't mind, I'd like to add just one thing, which is in a condominium, you don't have to have separate metering for all of your utilities. There, there are other ways you can make that happen where it's a percentage of the square feet and that's how they determine those utilities. So it doesn't mean that you have to have them.
Okay. So I guess the other thing you could do where the applicant has represented to you that these will be rented, that I presume you could put a condition in that should there be a change proposed, that they would come back to you with that.
I think that's reasonable because it's, it's unclear from the bylaw exactly what, you know, what it means to be converted into a dwelling unit within a house. I mean, it's the, I think the normal conception of if you have a house and you create some dwelling units within it, it's still a singles, you know, under single uh, ownership. Right? It's a house.
Well, in general residential, the way that works, and I know this is not that, but you basically, when you divide it into units, you have to be living, the person who's the owner has to be living in that particular home and the units, there's, there's a lot of ad- additional requirements for the units, but uh, that's, that's, I don't know if that's what you're talking about. It is not this. And there is no requirement for that.
I was only bringing it up because it, it just seems that many properties that do get the conversion, very few of them stay as a rental. At some point, the properties have to be transferred and you have to look at the financials. And you can look at examples all over town. Uh, you can look at some of the B and Bs that were converted into units and now they're all sold off. They're all individual ownership. So um, I understand the need for the rentals and I think the board is, is, is made it clear that the town does need rentals. It, you have to be aware that unless there's some kind of condition that says they cannot be transferred individually for sale, that um, what you actually give an approval for um, will not continue or, or may not even happen how you want it. Um, and I, and I just asked Noreen only because I've never seen that in a decision before. Uh, but just because in the business I'm in, I've seen it on so many properties now. And the reason we don't have the rentals and we don't have the affordable rentals is because all of these multifamily conversions have all been sold off and they're now second homes. So if this was going to be passed tonight, I would be against it unless there's some kind of condition that can be put in that this permit would allow for rentals only. And not for conversion to condos for individual sales. You'd have to keep it as rentals.
Right. So when you're issuing a special permit, you do have the right to issue conditions. And so where the homeowner or the property owner has indicated to you that they plan to rent these, that you can therefore condition that these units will be for rent. And should there be a change, that they would come back and request an approval for that change?
Sounds good to me.
Can you create conditions that aren't potentially legal?
Well, that would be illegal.
You would hope not.
It's just, it's a special permit for a, a use. So I think we, we do have.
Well, Mr. Dugan asked if that was lea- if it, he didn't know if it was legal. So I'm.
Yeah. Well, I think what he's asking, initially asked was could we permanently restrict you from ever selling these as, as condominium units? And I, I don't think we can do that, but we can say,
Rentals only?
We could say that we're giving you a permit to, to rent, which is what you've asked for.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and you know, and then if, and we normally in all our special permits, say any change in the use or in the structure, uh, you have to come back and because you're under a special permit restriction. So.
Okay.
The, the other thing too is that there was mention of affordability in the prior meeting as well as tonight. And there's a big difference between affordable and low income. So that's a, a big distinction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and when the board members had talked about that, they talked about affordable rents, not low income. Just so you understand that, there's a big difference.
I, I understand. I, I just, I do not know what this project is going to cost yet. And I also have to appease the historic commission that wants windows of a certain way and wants materials of a certain way. And I am a type of person who is not comfortable with over promising and under delivering. So I would really like to better understand what this project will cost before I'm able to commit to um, affordable. And I don't know anything about affordable. Um, I just know that two of the units are one bedroom and the market rate for that is certainly different than a two or a three bedroom, you know, unit. And it's um, needed in Falmouth. Are, we live in Falmouth here year round. My husband's a business owner in Falmouth as I, as I mentioned. Our intent for this is to be an asset for retirement. Um, since we're here locally, we would be able to, you know, see it locally. So I I'm very interested to hear about the pricing for condos, but it's not my intent and um, had, had no um, idea that that was even an option.
Thank you, Ms. Snowman. Um, you know, as far as rent goes, I think it might be beyond the purview of the board to ask, you know, just how much uh, each unit can go for. Uh, I know the board also deals with, you know, affordable units, especially in the 42B context. Um, but there's no rest, well, I don't think we can restrict the applicant to strictly uh, s- you know, strict affordable units. Uh, I don't, I don't think this zoning allows for that. Um, but you know, the, the market will dictate how much each, each unit will go for.
So um, can we close?
I think we can. Would you like to make that a motion?
I would move we close. I, I will add that I think.
One second.
Um, this might be another case where we ask Noreen to draft it because uh, it's, you know, if we're going to include conditions on limiting the use to rental and so forth, uh, we, we might want to be pretty careful about how that gets worded.
I agree, Ken. All right. So that was Ken's motion to close, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Uh, Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Scott?
Bud Selinsky, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. So the hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. How would the board like to proceed? Ken, I think you were having the right idea there.
Sure. So I, I'll propose that we ask uh, Noreen to draft positive motion with conditions. Uh, and uh, for consideration at the next, next meeting, I guess.
Very good. And shall we, uh, shall we give her some findings and conditions to, to work on?
So I think we want to uh, a finding certainly is that this was a dwelling in existence prior to January one nineteen eighty. Of course, we want to cite two forty fifty one A two. I think we want to state that we do not believe it uh, uh, qualifies under uh, two forty fifty one A five. I agree with you on that, TJ. And
Sure.
Uh, and Bob?
Um, when she purchased it, there was one, there was at least one dwelling unit, well, mixed used really.
Yeah. And she also presented, uh, you know, historical information on the construction of it. I think it was seventeen ninety eight.
Mm-hmm.
So that's certainly prior to nineteen eighty. I think we, you know, the, the size of the dwelling and the lot are suitable for remodeling. The proposed changes to the exterior are actually improvements. Uh, another finding, we're talking about two one bedroom and one two bedroom units. These are the types of units that uh, have been identified in the housing needs study as, as uh, needed rental units of that nature. The location proximity to downtown and to the bus station is excellent.
Ken, did you, did you, did you bring up the fact that there was um, document, I mean, uh, um, correspondence from uh, historical commission as a finding?
Yeah, I, I did. I mean.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Anybody else have other thoughts? Bob, Bob, you always have thoughts.
No, um, uh, Noreen, just on the, on the finding about the housing study, just make sure the housing study doesn't state it's for affordable rentals because if it does, you we can't state that here. So we wouldn't want to list it as a finding. I, I think there's a need, but I think your need listed uh, regarding affordability.
Well, also workforce housing. You know, that, I don't think they respect it to uh, stuff that qualifies.
It, it, it may be in there. Just, just double check the study because even on the workforce housing, again, they were saying because the wages down here, the workforce housing was. I, I just don't want to list something in a study if, if our finding is opposite from what the actual study is. Um, we got, hey, need to make a finding that uh, on the um, access to the property. It's only a uh, single lane shared easement for uh, access to uh, three properties. So that that's on there. Um, I, I assume, I, and I don't even know this and we didn't get into it and it hasn't gone that far, but um, I don't know anything about the fire department, rather we're now converting to a residential unit. So Noreen, maybe you can check. I assume because it's on a main road, it's okay. They don't have to get anything behind there. Um, but if there's anything in the fire department, things should be in there. Um, even regarding a condition, we would need to know that.
Um, Historical um, materials, uh, she said that she would abide by the, the recommendations from the historical on the materials, window style, all of that.
Yeah, she's going to have to, on the conditions, we're going to put condition on anything that historical requires because where it is. Um, they are doing an intensive uh, renovation. So uh, I, I don't think it's, even if they got it, I don't think it has anything to do with demolition, like, because they're not taking it down, but anything that historical says that they need.
Yes, let me, can I ask you a question while we're doing this?
Go ahead, Scott.
The app, uh, Mr. Chairman, the applicant had stated that she wasn't quite sure how much this was going to cost. Should that be in the findings in the event that they have to pull the permit because they can't do the, the project because it's unaffordable? Would that be the finding?
I'd, I'd want to stay away from that sort of thing, Scott, but we can definitely say that she represented to us that they were intending on uh,
Oh, yeah.
You know, proposing rentals.
The wording.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, put a finding in about the revised to show the septic system. Uh, it was an H twenty tank. Uh, regarding any of the work in the building, um, wouldn't be a finding, but a condition, but you're going to have to figure out how to word that too, because there's no way to get a lot of stuff back there and all those businesses um, are in business every day for clients. So you're not going to be able to block any access to those businesses. I think, I think there's an architect in the back. Um, I know while I was there, those businesses were seeing clients. Um, I think you need to have a correction of the existing site plan. So that actually shows what the existing site is. Uh, again, when it gets to conditions, um, there is a egress from the second floor that currently goes to a stairway down the back. Um, the size deck that's being proposed on there, I think is probably something that shouldn't be allowed because it's substantial and it should just be a whatever deck is decking is needed to, you know, to use that as in, uh, as in egress.
Well, I, I would disagree with that. I think it's uh, it's already a flat roof there. I mean, all we're doing is putting a railing around it.
You do, but you've got, when you enlarge your deck space like that, you've got these surrounding businesses now. So I, I think because it's a tight area back there and they're everybody, I, I think it could cause a problem.
In what way?
What day you're seeing clients all day and people hanging out, that's a large.
People are, are gonna, you know, their use is going to be during the non-business hours. This is a residence.
I don't think you can say that, Ken. I mean, you, you can, it's, it's, you know, listen, it's, it's your situation anyways. I'm just telling you that. Have you been to the site?
Yes, I've been to the site. I walked all around it.
So you know how tight it is when you pull in there with the other businesses?
But it was being used, uh, you know, it's been used in various ways and you know, with that tightness already there.
So you don't think an, an enlargement of something that large is considered substantial?
What's going to limit this is the number of bedrooms and the number of people that can live in those apartments. And if they want to have some furniture outside and sit outside and enjoy the sunshine, I wa- I, more power to them. I think it makes it, makes those more attractive places to live. I, I also don't think it's up to us, you know, it's not affecting the footprint. It's not affecting. I mean, we, we have a right to control things like, you know, the footprint, the number of bedrooms, stuff like that. But if they want to have a deck in it, they're not adding anything to the structure except for a railing to, you know.
Then, 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 then put in a, just put in the finding just to cover yourself. It's in the bylaw that you consider the deck being added is not a substantial change.
There we go. That's fine. There we go. That's fine. I mean, historic isn't going to let them do anything that's.
I'm only saying that because the bylaws is you can't do a substantial change. So if you think that,
Yeah.
even it isn't, you, you got to list it in there that it is.
I don't think it's a material change to the exterior. It's basically putting decking over the roof.
Yeah, so just, so just list it that way.
All right. Anything else for findings? About conditions? Per revised plans showing existing conditions, right?
Yes, and, and obviously the number of bedrooms, number of apartments. And the other one that we've talked about, which I think needs to be carefully drafted is use for rental only.
And then a revised plan showing proposed, just so those walkways and stuff are added back in on the proposed. That's what's going on.
I also agree with Robert. We, we should get an accurate, you know, site plan that shows the layout of the parking and all that.
All right.
We did put conditions, we did put condition they comply with whatever historic was or.
We did have that as a finding. We'll put it as a condition too.
Yeah, let me just check the old referrals.
If I could just, a site, a revised site and septic plan was submitted and stamped a week ago. Given to Mr. Mella, so I'm, I'm confused if you didn't receive that.
We did, but the site shows, so things on the site that don't exist. It would probably work as the proposed plan. I think it's a mislabeling. I think they could do it as a proposed. But what is shown in that site plan isn't the actual site when you go there. There's, there's, there's items in it. So just have a review it.
From Ivan Islands Engineering, that, that site plan?
So an existing site plan should show what is there exactly as it's presented without any changes. And then you can do a proposed plan that shows actually whatever the changes are. Regarding engineering, you're going to have to add in the affixing of legible numbers wording. You're going to have to work, put in anything regarding connections to utilities. You're going to have to put in that if they need to do anything within that alteration of that right of, right of way, even to bring in utilities, they're going to need to get a permit with engineering division. Any changes at all, I think we already have this, but any changes whatsoever in that property has to go before the historical commission. There's also, you're going to have to also add in all the things from the water department. There were specific requirements if they start breaking these up into units with water service. They also are going to have to show all water lines and services on the plan. So if that's not in there, that's going to have to be there. If the units there's a, there's a comment on the water plan. It basically just says the units may need individual services, if, services if they are to be sold and not rented. Water Massachusetts has to be covered by the landlord so they, they can use one service as rentals, but that doesn't work if you sell.
Right, but we're saying that's not.
No, I'm just saying, so per the, per the water department, they put that in their referral.
All right. Anything else for conditions, Bob?
No, I think that's, I think it's it. Oh, hours. Figure out something for hours of construction, figure out something for management of, you know, vehicles to and from the property as well as any materials being used. Or store.
Very good.
Yeah, we might want some, so how many cars? How many lot, how many parking spaces were set aside for the units?
So on this plan, it showed that there were two cars. When you first came in, there were two cars and then I think I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure there was an additional four, which would be six.
Isn't there street parking there too?
There is some street parking.
I think there is, Scott.
There is street parking. So the only good thing in the street parking is for some reason, I think, is there's so much in that area. There is very rarely any available street parking available.
Yeah, park at the bus station and walk home.
I guess what I'm thinking is we could put a limit on number of work vehicles. We, we definitely do not want to interfere with the businesses by taking up all their.
Most of it's interior, right? Most of it's interior work.
Yeah.
True.
But you still need, you know, the guy shows up with his, with his van. You got the plumber, the electrician.
So the plan shows two parking spaces near where the bulkhead is and then an additional four. I don't know how many spaces the other businesses have. I think what I would say, there was additional six or seven cars on the other side.
So, so you're, so that adds up to, you said four and two, six?
Six, six on this side.
So I mean, we could just put it at. No more than six in the lot. How about that?
As a business use, we've had eight parking spaces there for eight employees.
So where have you, well, I guess the hearing is closed. I just, there's nowhere on the plan that you, that I could see where you could, you know, fit in eight. I don't know what the.
All right. Anything else? All right, seeing none. So that was a motion by Ken instructing Noreen to draft a positive decision with conditions. That was seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So the motion passes four to one. And Noreen, when's, when's a good date to review that?
April 22nd.
April 22nd. All right. Thank you for your time, Ms. Snowman, and we'll see you April 22nd. All right. So up next, we're moving on to our new public hearings. We have application 12 dash 21 DePina, 14 Andy's Lane in West Falmouth.
So application number 12 dash 21. Antonio H. and Judith C. DePina, 14 Andy's Lane in West Falmouth have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240 dash 69E of the Code of Falmouth to allow a 15 by 26 foot above ground swimming pool, which is increasing lot coverage by structures, excuse me, on subject properties known as 14 Andy's Lane, West Falmouth. For referrals. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Andy's Lane is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. And two, no site work is proposed. From planning, no comment. From Concom, no comment. It appears outside the jurisdiction. Assessors Department, no comment. Fire Department, no issues with project is drawn. Health Department, no setback requirement for above ground pools in Title V. The pool, the pool proposed location does not impact the septic system. The applicant should install a small dry well to capture the backwash of water if using a sand filter. And Water Department, no comment. And that's it.
Thank you, Bob. And I believe we have the applicant themselves. But I'm not sure if they're on the attendees list at the moment. There's only so many people out there right now. I don't see them.
I'm not sure they were intended to present.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, do we, if, I mean, this looks like a pretty easy application. Do they need to be here?
They usually do. Noreen, any comment on that? Do they, does the applicant have to be present? Especially given the subject matter of this application?
Yeah, I, so I guess what I would say to you is if the board has questions or issues with the application, I would recommend that you continue. If the board feels that there's not questions and it's straightforward, they clearly submitted an application requesting approval. So I guess I would leave that up to the board as far as, you know, how you want to proceed.
It's a very minor increase to 21.5% for a surface structure. It meets the setbacks. I, you know, I visited the site. Actually did see the applicant there. I understand why they're not here.
Oh, looks like they just jumped in. Judy DePina, if that is the applicant?
Could be.
Let's get them elevated and take a peek, shall we? Ms. DePina, you've been elevated. All you'll need to do is unmute yourself and turn on your video. And since you're just joining us, we just opened up your application and we were wondering what happened to you. Looks like you did unmute yourself. Are you there, Ms. DePina?
Hi.
Hi.
I am.
So it sounds like you might be listening on TV or if you have another laptop open, you'll have to either mute it or turn it off. Thomas DePina?
Okay.
Looks like we have you.
Yes.
All right. So we just opened up your application. I don't know if you want to make any comments of your own regarding it?
I just had a comment about the filter. It will not be, it's going to be a DE filter, which does not require the extra recommendation that the health wanted.
All right. Anything else?
And what did you call that?
I don't think so.
What, what was that called? The DE?
It's called the DE filter.
DE filter. Thank you.
All right. So what we usually, I'm sure you've been watching us. We usually turn it to board questions, see if we have any.
Okay, that's fine.
Great. Bob, any questions?
No questions.
Ed?
No, no questions.
All right, Mary.
No questions.
James?
No questions.
Ken?
No questions.
Scott?
Zero questions.
All right. Ms. DePina, I'm, I'm not letting you get off that easy. I do have a question.
We almost had a first.
Yep. I'm the chair. Sometimes I have to do that. So it looks like you have a shed and that's going to be remaining on the property?
Correct.
All right. And because of the pool, that pushes you over 20% to 21.5, thus the need for the special permit.
Correct.
All right. All set with my questions. Thank you. If there's any question, comment or concern out there for members of the public, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. We will elevate you shortly.
So just as a side note, I did have a conversation with the building department today. It's always good to learn new things. And what they tell us is that for an above ground pool, if the height of the wall is four feet or greater, there's not a fence requirement similar to in, in ground pool. That being said, they do require that a ladder for the pool either be removed whenever the pool's not in use or that there be a locked ladder, just for safety purposes.
All right. And Ms. DePina, you'll have a ladder that will do either or?
Correct, correct. I have, I have small grandchildren, so safety is my number one concern.
Fantastic. Sounds like they're going to have fun this summer.
Sure. And, and the yard is, is pretty much fenced in anyways.
Sounds good. All right. So I'm not seeing any public comment. Back to the board. Any sort of follow up questions?
Motion to close.
All right. Motion to close by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. Roll, roll call vote to close the hearing first. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So the hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. Scott, were you getting to an approval?
Yeah, motion approved.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion approved by Scott and seconded by Bob. Findings?
240 69E, 240 dash 216. I think we should add to the findings what Noreen said about the building department.
Absolutely. And condition as well.
Correct.
All right. Anything else?
And then just a finding about the increase in lot coverage. It's only 1.5. So 21.5%.
All right.
And then also just note in the finding, the health department. And then note next to that, the finding that per the applicant's testimony, that the pool have a DE filter and not a sand filter. So dry well will not be needed. Or catch basin.
Very good. All right. Anything else? Right. So that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Scott and seconded by Bob.
Uh, we didn't, do we do conditions?
I'm sorry, didn't, go ahead. Conditions?
I did it during findings, but I wanted the conditions as well. So we doubled up on the safety on the ladder. That's why I asked for it to be a condition as well.
That's what I thought you did, Scott. Thank you.
And then, and then we need to put, then Noreen, that if anytime they, they decide to change the filter to a sand filter, they have to come back here or, or get whatever the changes from the, what's required from health. I, they don't have any plans now, but you know, in the future, who knows if they might need one or not. Or maybe that could be done administratively. And per plan that's shown.
All right. So if that takes care of everything, that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Scott and seconded by Bob. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Ms. DePina? Have a good time with the pool and the grandchildren this summer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Moving right along, we have application 14 dash 21 Oliver, 643 Old Barnstable Road in East Falmouth.
To application number 14 dash 21, Thomas W. and Michelle M. Oliver of 643 Old Barnstable Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240 dash 38G of the Code of Falmouth to allow a detached three car garage on subject property known as 643 Old Barnstable Road, East Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. Concom has no comment on the above references. It appears to fall outside the jurisdiction. From the engineering department, one, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Old Barnstable Road is a public. Old Barnstable Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. Four, we recommend the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain garden, or stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof. Five, where portions of this work are close to a budding property, we recommend that a limit of work slash clearing be added to the plans. The limit of work slash clearing should include how it will be demarcated in the field and include any erosion and sediment controls if required to protect the abutting property. From the assessors department, this includes lot nine and lot nine A. Water department, no comment. Planning board, no comment. Fire department has no issues with plans as drawn and no record, no letters for or against.
Thank you, Bob. And for the applicant, we have Attorney Clower once again.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower, and I represent the applicants, Tom and Michelle Oliver. They are the owners of 643 Old Barnstable Road. They're here tonight before you seeking permission to construct an accessory structure. Effectively, it's a barn, but it will have parking for three cars as well as some workshop space. So this does require a special permit under 240-38. 643 Old Barnstable Road is a large pork chop, pork chop shaped lot. It's 1.8 acres and it's AGA zoning. Currently, there's a really lovely three-bedroom home located at the front of the lot with a really significant amount of space to the rear. The client's looking to create a new accessory structure. This will be for additional parking and storage. He's a woodworker. He'd like to have some workshop space. The parking is for his personal vehicles, including a truck and three motorcycles. It's, uh, it's a substantial structure, but, but one that's certainly in character with the neighborhood. This garage is located at the rear of the lot. It's well shielded from the street and from neighbors. Has pretty significant setbacks to the property lines, the nearest property line to an undeveloped property is 26 feet. It's 66 feet to the northeasterly line and 44 feet are there both to the southwesterly lot line. This garage is a barn as opposed to have no habitable space at all. They would like to have water and, and heat, but it is not intended for habitable space, but it is workshop space, as I mentioned. The special permit provision for spaces in excess of three-car parking doesn't really set forth any standards. So in that situation, we looked at the standards of 240, 216. And the question there is, does, does the proposed use have adverse effects which overbalance the beneficial effects to the neighborhood and to the town? And I don't believe there are any adverse effects to this proposal. The lot is more than adequate in size and the garage does not change. Current use of this is a residential lot. The lot size is certainly suitable for the use. There's no impact on traffic flow or safety. And there's no impact on neighborhood visual character. That's, that's effectively it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them, but I believe that, that this certainly does qualify for a special permit and not ask the board move forward in granting it.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Clower. We'll turn it to board questions. Bob, anything? Looks like you muted Bob. I don't know if you're.
No, I don't have any questions. I just want to make a note that the plan does show some stormwater controls. I know that that was something that was asked for. It shows a bit in earth berm line.
All right.
I, I guess, I guess.
I'm sorry, Bob.
Just one question. I know they said about water and heat, so they just need a sink source then and all looking for a full bath or?
No, no intention to put a full bath in it there at this point.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
He really intended it for spigot use.
All right. Ted?
No, I don't have any questions. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. You can't see the building in the street and sway back. Was surprised I could even find it.
Mary?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. James?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Ken?
So there, there's no business operating out of, of this site, is there?
No, I mean, Mr. Oliver is a builder, but he's not using this as a contractor's yard. This is for his own personal vehicles and belongings.
Okay. You know, the only other thing I noted when I was there was this awful lot of really nice pines and trees. It looks like you're going to be taking out quite a few of them.
So in, in what I'll call good news, in speaking with Mr. Oliver today, he actually told me that he intends to relocate those pines. He's not chopping them down, but he's in fact going to relocate them as much as possible.
They're pretty big. Going to be able to move those. Anyway, so you're saying?
That to braver people than I.
Yeah. So my only thought was whether you need all that much. He's got a lot of driveway there, but yeah.
All right, Scott?
Just to follow up on Ken. So you said he's a licensed builder?
Yeah, so that's my understanding. And he is in the audience tonight if we need to speak with him.
All right. So, so when I was there this morning, I noticed there were tools of the trade there. Heavy equipment, trailers, all of that. That's not going to remain there as, when this goes up. Is, I guess my question is, is there a previous special permit for a home-based business there?
Not that I'm aware of. He, he didn't tell me that he has a skid steer and a mini excavator, but they are used on-site. They're for his personal use on that site. But this is not intended to be a contractor's yard, not, not intended to be used for business purposes. This is for his, his own personal belongings and, and tools and.
And forgive me for sounding argumentative. He's a builder, a licensed builder in town?
Yes.
And he runs his business out of his home?
I'm not sure where he runs his business from, to be quite honest. It's not a question that we, we had asked.
Could we find out?
Mr. Oliver is, is here tonight.
Sure. I think he's, he must be the one raising his hand. All right. If we could get him elevated, please. All right, Mr. Oliver. You've been elevated. Looks like you just unmuted yourself, so welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Thomas Oliver. I'm the applicant at 643 Old Barnstable Road. Thank you for taking the time to consider this project. Just to shed a little light on my occupation, I'm really just a self-employed construction supervisor. I really don't do any of the construction myself. I just supervise other contractors. I work for one builder in particular, pretty much full-time, and he just hires me to run the job for him. So the equipment that I do have in my yard, I've owned for a number of years, and I just pretty much use it for tree work, you know, on that property. I try to keep the woods neat and thin so they stay healthy. A lot of the bigger white pines, I am going to try to move some of, there's a couple that I won't be able to, but some of the medium-sized white pines, I definitely intend on moving, and I have the equipment to do that. But I have no intentions at all to use this as a contracted yard. I don't think my wife would ever let me do that. It's, it's really essentially just to house my personal belongings and hopefully someday we'll get a recreational vehicle that I can also park in there when not being used.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Oliver? All right. Not hearing any. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you.
All right. And where were we for board questions? Anyone else? Scott, I think we left off with you, right?
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else at all? All right. Attorney Clower, just confirming the height is a 21 feet?
Yeah, it is 21, 21 and a half feet, which is below the 22 feet that's allowed.
All right. And slab construction, no basement?
That's correct.
Very good. All right. Turn it over to public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon using the Zoom virtual software, and we will elevate you shortly. All right. Not seeing anyone for public comment, so back to the board. Any follow-up questions?
Prepared to move to close.
Very good. Motion to close made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Thank you, Bob. Ted?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Scott?
Johnson Skye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So the hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. How would the board like to proceed? Not everyone at once.
I'll move with conditions in favor. And I'll rely on Robert to provide all the conditions.
Very good. Bob, would you like to second that?
Yeah, I guess so.
Sounds good. All right. Findings?
240-38G, 240-216. Property has 1.82 acres. It's well under lot coverage. It's only 5.59% where 20% is allowed and conforms to all setback requirements. The structure is for the storage of applicant's own personal vehicles as well as a woodworking space. They will have water in the structure only for spigot use, and there will be heat. There'll be no habitable space allowed. They have shown a demarcated line on the plan as asked for by engineering.
Yeah, they also provided the drywells on the plan.
Provided the drywells.
And there's a berm for retention of stormwater also.
And the ridge height will be 21.1 feet. It's also within a zone two coastal overlay of our white.
I have the height as 21 feet, 10 inches for the ridge height.
That's what you have. We'll go with that one. I was reading it off somewhere.
The planet shows 21, 1.
Okay, I could stand correctly.
Oh, that's interesting.
Oh, no, it says 21, 1 above and then 21, 10 below, so. Let's go with the higher one.
Sure.
21, 10. If needed. Also put in the findings that the applicant does work for a building company. All the equipment currently in sight is for personally use only. And he did make statements that he's not using at all to run a home business or a contractor's yard.
All right.
I also think maybe there's, there were no negative comments from a butters. No, no, no butter, a butters expressed concern. Let's put it that way.
Sounds good, Ken. All right. Conditions?
Per plans, water service for spigot use only, no baths, no habitable space. I guess personal, I don't know, personal vehicles only. Do you put something like that or you?
Well, no, no, I think we want to stipulate no use as a
No use as a, no use as a home-based business or a contractor's yard.
Right.
I like that. All right. Any other conditions?
The water department may or may not request a separate line. I would defer that the, or recommend that the applicant prior to applying for a building permit, check with the water department on whether they will require a separate service or designation of the line on the plan, because that has come up lately.
All right. Any other conditions?
Do you want to have a height cert where the height is approaching 22 feet?
Sure. That's the framing stage.
All right. Last call for anything else for conditions. All right. Seeing none. That was a motion to approve with conditions made by Ken and seconded by Bob. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ted?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Scott?
Johnson Skye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Attorney Clower, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
You too.
Did I hear you say last call?
Almost.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd just like to request a break.
I was going to suggest that myself. A five-minute break. Last call. We'll have to wait, Ken. All right. See everyone in then five. All right, up next we have our last public hearing of the night. We have application thirteen dash twenty one. Cove Cottage LLC twenty four Reed Path, also known as ninety eight Seapit Road in East Falmouth.
For application number thirteen dash twenty one Cove Cottage LLC sixty three Orchard Street, Cambridge, Mass. Has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three of the code of Falmouth to adjust lot lines on subject property known as twenty four Reed Path, East Falmouth, Mass. Also known as ninety eight Seapit Road, East Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. Conservation staff have no comment on this special permit at this proposed time. Or as proposed at this time. From engineering. These appear to be the plans we reviewed for planning attached to our comments from that review. Regarding planning, there are no proposed water revisions. Oh, actually, that was that was Tom Block. A second. Yeah, from Scott Sluter. So these are what engineering referred for planning. Sewage adequacy of the existing and proposed subsurface sewage disposal systems are subject to the Board of Health's review and approval. Note that the system for twenty four Reed Path that's shown in the plans appears to straddle the proposed lot line and may not meet Title V setbacks. We defer to the Board of Health. For water, there were no proposed water revisions. Parking and access of the parcel ID is correct, question mark. There was no proposed site work. Therefore, as shown on the plans, no street opening or driveway permit would be required for the project. Reed Path in this area appears to be a paper street. Currently, it appears that twenty four Reed Path is accessed via a shared driveway in the Reed Path layout or the driveway for thirty two Nichols Road. The driveways do not appear to be shown on the plans. How will the reconfigured lot be accessed? We recommend access to these lot be clarified and shown in all plans. A new driveway off Seapit Road would require a driveway permit. A new driveway off the driveway in Reed Path would not require a driveway permit. However, an easement may be necessary. We requested if a driveway permit is required that a condition be included in any approval requiring a driveway permit. If the shared driveway in the Reed Path layout is the access for this lot, we recommend that a condition be included in any approval that requires a sign be posted at the intersection of the driveway. With Seapit Road indicating houses ninety eight dash one ten are accessed from this driveway. If a new driveway off Seapit Road is proposed, the sign should be required. But indicate one oh eight dash one ten. The address twenty four Reed Path was reviewed by the Falmouth DPW fire, Falmouth Fire Rescue and assessing. And we determined that this house should have a Seapit Road address. During a site inspection, it was observed that ninety eight is posted on the front of this house, which would be an acceptable Seapit Road number. The address for this lot should be corrected in town and state systems. Please have the applicant contact the DPW Engineering Division for address correction. Our assessors department. Thirty two twenty one zero zero five C zero two seven includes lots twenty seven and twenty eight. Thirty two twenty one zero zero five zero twenty six includes lots twenty five and twenty six. Water department. The water mains and services must be shown in the plans. The new lot lines must include the existing water service inside of the lots or the existing water services must be renewed to place them within the new lots. If the lines must be renewed in meter pits. Any meter pit shall be abandoned and meters must be installed inside of the homes. From health department. This one's dated two twenty one and at that time it said the plan show a proposed septic system for one oh eight Seapit that appears to have ample room for septic system in reserved area depicted. The septic system location depicted with twenty four Reed Path shows a new lot line to be less than ten feet from the existing SAS. That setback should be kept to ten unless the variance from the Board of Health would be required or a new septic is installed. Water source is not shown. If town water, the water lines will have to be shown and setbacks maintained. If on wells, a hundred foot setback from a drinking water well to a leaching field will need to be respected on March nineteenth. Regarding this referral, this is again is from Scott McGann with health. He put comments. The revised plans show a relocation of a portion of the soil absorption system at twenty four Reed Path to accommodate the new lot line being proposed. Water lines have been shown where there is less than ten feet from a septic component or sewer line. The plan indicates there will be sleeving to mitigate the inability to maintain the ten foot setback requirement. Refer to the water department for their comments. The new septic system shown for one oh eight Seapit appears to meet setbacks. Both one oh eight Seapit and twenty four Reed Path septic systems will need to be permitted prior to installation. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. There is one letter of support. This is from Carol Wayland. It says, my husband and I own a house at one ten Seapit Road and have been friends as well as neighbors of the Peterson family for thirty years. We support their application before the zoning board for a special permit allowing the proposed building setback to their property lines. And that's all we have right now.
All right, and for the applicant, oh, it's Attorney Bob Amant. If he could be elevated, please. I was looking at Attorney Clower's box there thinking it was gonna be him. All right, Attorney Amant, we have you elevated.
Hi.
Welcome.
Evening. I'm with Clower. You've been seeing a lot more of him lately. I represent the applicant in Massachusetts Limited Liability Company named Cove Cottage LLC. And this is perhaps an unusual application and I hope one that's easy for you to approve because there's no change of use intended and there's no change in any structure that's intended. What is changing is that to address a number of zoning and related issues. We've come up with a solution to adjust existing lot lines between the three houses that are owned by the Peterson family. Two of them in the applicant's LLC, two of those properties and the other property, one oh eight Seapit. Also Peterson family property is in a different LLC and different members of the current generation of owners are involved in each of those LLCs. This is a property or that's been in the same family now for many, many decades. Two of the houses were built in nineteen fifty. The southerly house at one oh eight Seapit was built in nineteen seventy two. And as we see happening, as families expand over the years, family properties don't work the same way because different parts of the family want to own a piece or the older generation is distributing property. And so problems which haven't had to be resolved previously are now come to the fore and we try to figure it out. I'd like to, if I can do it, I hope and share the screen and show you a plan. How's that work? Are able to see?
Yeah, we we can see it.
Perfect, wonderful. So the purple lines show the existing lot lines. They are land court properties that were laid out in nineteen nineteen twenty six. There are actually five land court lots shown there. The two larger lots in the middle and to the north, the upper one. Each consists of two lots, but they've been merged over the years for assessment and zoning purposes. And focus on that those purple lines. And what you see is some unusual conditions. The middle house extends nine feet across the property line between the northerly lot and the middle lot. Well, that's a problem. It makes both of those lots unmarketable. And it needs to be dealt with. The southerly lot, one oh eight Seapit is a very unusual lot. Notice that it's only frontage, if it even constitutes or qualifies as frontage is on that triangular portion of Reed Path. And while the engineering department referred to Reed Path as a paper road, that's really not not right. It is a marginally improved road. It's a shelved surface road. It's shown on the nineteen twenty six land court plan. And it is used for access to the one oh eight property, also the driveway access to the garage on the Wayland property at one ten Seapit. That's just to the right, to the left rather, of the one oh eight Seapit property. So here we have a lot with almost no frontage. And that lot is served by a cesspool. And the entire lot is within conservation commission jurisdiction area. So there's no good place on that lot to replace the septic system. Those are the primary problems, the ones of major concern with the existing conditions for this family. So what we've come up with is a plan that adjusts the lot lines to address those problems. The black lines that are shown on the plan here are proposed lot lines. You can see, of course, that the new line addresses the setback problem or actually it's this is setback problem, but it's a structure that's actually within ten feet of the line on both sides of the existing line. So that will become would become conforming on that side. We've created a lot that extends all the way to Seapit and now has more than a hundred feet of frontage. So we go from a situation where there's no frontage and technically when a lot abuts the end of a road like this, that wouldn't constitute frontage. I doubt that there's any case law or answer to the question of whether a diagonal line like this to the center line of the road. a diagonal line like this to the center line of the road, uh, whether that's frontage or not, but it doesn't matter. Now we'll have a hundred feet of frontage, um, including, um, close to fifty feet of, of frontage on, uh, C pit, but the total counts and there's a hundred feet of frontage on Reed Path. Um, and we've created a good location. We're putting a new septic system that's outside of Conservation Commission jurisdiction. Um, the planning board was asked to issue a special permit to allow this area where the septic system will be, um, and its connection to the rest of the property to only be forty feet wide. The zoning bylaw provides that no lot should be less than fifty feet wide except at corners, but a special permit can be granted to allow the width of a lot to be reduced by Planning Board Special Permit, um, by twenty percent. And several times, uh, the plant, that I'm aware of, the Planning Board has granted such a special permit, and they did in this case. The Planning Board, um, granted that special permit, um, unanimously, seven votes in favor, um, and complimented the creative engineering, um, for a plan that's, that, uh, so well addresses, um, um, problems. In addition, the Planning Board endorsed an A and R plan that was submitted, um, so that this new layout can be recorded. This is land court property, so it does, the plan has to go to the land court uh, and approve there by their engineering department before we can record the plan. We solved all the problems that we needed to, we think, except for one. And it's the reason that, uh, we're before the zoning board of appeals. And that is that the new proposed property line between the middle lot, which is, uh, called lot, uh, two nineteen by the land court and the southerly lot, the new southerly lot, which is two eighteen. This line at one point is two point eight feet from the southwesterly corner of, of this house on the middle lot. And why do we end up with that result? It's because there's only fifty-two feet, uh, two fifty-two point eight feet from the corner of the house to Reed Path. And the Planning Board granted a special permit to allow, to allow this portion of lot to be only forty feet wide. But we, we would need fifty feet distance in order to, um, have both a ten foot setback from that middle house and, uh, also that forty, uh, foot, um, minimum that was allowed by, uh, the Planning Board Special Permit, which we obtained last fall. Um, the upshot is that all of this works and we will record the plan. If the Board of Appeals grants a special permit to allow this continued, uh, reduced setback. And so the application has been filed under, uh, section two forty dash three. Um, and we believe that this new, um, lot layout is clearly, um, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the, um, existing non-conforming layout. We're going from a situation where the house goes nine point one feet across the line to a situation where we've reduced this as much as possible, given the location of the existing house. Um, and although we do not have a ten foot setback, we have enough setback to walk around the house. I, and as I said, it's clearly not substantially more detrimental. The fact that it gives us this septic system, um, location, uh, for the adjacent property is terrific. This area where the house is next to is presently part of this lot, so we're not creating a, uh, setback problem for a new owner. This is family that supports this. The Waylands who live at this corner property of, as you know, um, written in, in, in support of the application. Um, other benefits are that this house someday will be replaced and we've created a terrific location for a new house in this area outside of Conservation Commission jurisdiction. We also wanted to be able to continue to use the existing septic systems, which are Title V systems. And this plan uh, lets us do so. The, this, um, engineering department, the Health Department have noted that the approximate location shown on the plan would, would suggest that, um, we'd be, we would need a variance from the Board of Health uh, in order to have a lot line that close to the, uh, septic system. Um, whether we would get that variance or not, I don't know, but what we're proposing is to just relocate the, um, a bit of the, um, leaching field so that we maintain the ten foot setback. Check this plan, uh, which is, uh, the latest site plan that was, uh, submitted to the board. Um, was submitted in response to the referrals from the Water Department and the Board of Health and the Engineering Department. And all of the concerns raised by the town, uh, departments, we have no problem with, no objection to, uh, whatsoever. Um, and what this plan shows is the relocation of the water service for the middle lot, which presently would run through the location where the septic system is proposed. We're showing that to be relocated, to come up, uh, from C Pit Road on the property and not require any, uh, easement, um, at all. We've also shown the existing, uh, water service for the, uh, other lots, the other two lots, they won't change except for the sleeve that was referred to when this, um, that had to be a sleeve over the water service to, for the, how, septic system when it's relocated and improved. And, uh, by the way, uh, the Planning Board imposed a condition in their special permit that this new septic system for one oh eight be a, uh, denitrification, uh, septic system, so that's one more benefit for, uh, for the environment besides actually moving it outside of Conservation Commission jurisdiction. Um, there were questions raised about, uh, uh, driveways. These three properties will continue to be owned by related family members. Um, historically, uh, there hasn't been parking on the middle lot, um, at least not the new proposed little lot. There has been parking in the area where the uh, septic system is proposed or just off of Reed Path. And that has been, um, used by both the one oh eight property and this middle property, which uh, will become known as ninety-eight C Pit Road as, as requested. But on the assessor's records, um, has been, uh, twenty-four Reed Path. Um, making it ninety-eight seems to be consistent with that number that's on the house and no problem with that at all. Um, as you know, a driveway used by only two properties is permitted by right entitlement. If it is by three or more properties, you need a special permit as a common, um, driveway. Uh, these are fairly rustic properties and the parking arrangement has been, uh, uh, been informal. Um, it would be possible, of course, to have a new driveway off of C pit that would require a curb cut as proposed. Um, the family doesn't have any present intention of, of, uh, doing that. There's also parking in this area on, um, the northerly, uh, property and, uh,
Attorney Amant, I hate to interrupt you, but you are at the fifteen minute mark. Do you, do you need more time for your presentation?
I think, um, that I've explained this to you. I think there's no adverse impact whatsoever to anybody, certainly not to the neighborhood. Special permit is only needed for this issue on the middle lot and butters on both side are family who are in favor, so uh, I hope that you, uh, are able to, um, grant the special permit, uh, which effectively allows the house to stay where it is, but to be within ten feet, two point eight, two point eight feet to be precise of, uh, the proposed property line. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Amant. We'll turn it over to board questions. Uh, let's see what this view I have. Uh, Ken, you're right next to me. Any questions?
Are there any issues with setbacks, uh, from flood zone, three foot contour, that kind of thing?
Can I, you asked about setbacks, but I didn't catch the from. And you're muted.
From the flood zones, from three foot contour, that sort of thing?
Well, not with the, not with the middle house, Ken, that is the subject of this. The, the house at one oh eight, and we've shown it. Well, we've shown all the distances, by the way. Uh, we've shown the setback from, from the, um, the contour. And that middle house shows to be seventy-four feet away from that. The zoning requires fifty. Now the southerly house, that one oh eight shows to be, I think, um,
Forty-one?
Well, I see a forty there. I'm not sure. Um, so that is non-conforming to a deck. Um, but that's not changing at all. And obviously there's no way
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we need to address it in the permit.
Well, I believe that this permit only has to do with the new lot, uh, two nineteen. The layout of the lot lines is actually, um, uh, done lawfully, uh, and we, except for that reduced setback of the corner of the house, uh, we would not need a, we wouldn't be before the Board of Appeals. Um, that, that's why we're there. Obviously, I have, uh, no objection to your noting, um, that condition, uh, the existing non-conformance, uh, with regard to, uh, one oh eight C pit.
Okay, thanks. That, and that's the only thing I noticed, though. I mean, you're getting rid of the encroachment, which is great. Yeah, all right, thanks.
All right, thanks, Ken. Uh, Ed, any questions? Ed, do we have you?
Yes.
Any questions?
No.
All right.
No, I don't have any.
All right, thank you, Ed. Bob, anything?
Yeah, so Mr. Amant, why wouldn't you need some relief for thirty-two Nichols Road since it was undersized before and now you're cutting the lot size almost in half?
Um, that's a good question, but it's a, a very clear answer to it. And that is that, um, our zoning bylaw allows for the adjustment of lot lines between contiguous properties and specifically says that, um, uh, more than, uh, that three or more properties can participate in the adjustment of the lot lines. And that's what we've done here. The requirement, and it seems a little bit arbitrary, but it is what the zoning bylaw says, is that the lots have to end up the same size. So that's why that new lot two twenty at the corner, which indeed is smaller than the, um, existing double lot, um, along Nichols Road. That lot is the same size as the existing lot twenty-three. That's the southerly lot. And so what we've done is created three new lots that are the same size at, as the three previous lots. Um, that is discussed in detail in correspondence with the Building Commissioner, which he agreed with the result and the Planning Board, and I submitted that, uh, to the board with the application. And the, uh, Planning Board, um, also noted that this adjustment of the lot lines was done by Wright. Um, and, um, we wouldn't have needed their special permit except for the fact that we wanted to have a portion of one of the lots be less than forty feet, um, wide. The section that allows that is two forty sixty-six A, uh, of the bylaw.
On one, okay, thank, thank you. On, on one oh eight C Pit Road, what is that existing bedroom count of that structure?
I believe, um, and again, I don't think that, that that is part of this application. Um, uh, it's either four or five bedrooms. It depends on how you count them, I suppose. But it would have, um, if it has nine rooms in it, as you know, um, actually, if, if the structure has eight or more rooms, then the required septic system is not based on the number of bedrooms. It's, they, at that point, it's becomes based on the number of rooms and the septic system is sufficient if it, um, um, if you count the number of rooms divided by two and round down, that's
So by, so, so by changing the lot lines and putting the new proposed septic system out front and outside of Conservation jurisdiction, does that allow you to increase the number of bedrooms on that property?
There'd be no prohibition on the number of bedrooms on the property. As long as you could, we would be going from, uh, you, you would not need a variance from the Board of Health. And you'd be substituting a Title V system, and I would note, by the way, it's a, um, advanced treatment denitrification system required by the Planning Board. You'd be substituting that for the cesspool. We did note in the, um, a correspondence with the application that the adjustment of lot lines, it gives the possibility of an addition at the one oh eight, um, uh, C Pit property, but, um, we'd have a substantially improved, um, septic system also. Um, any addition would require Conservation Commission approval and mitigation, um, in terms of, uh, planting. Um, so I can't rule out that possibility, uh, but I also, um, again, uh, state that this application concerns lot two nineteen.
So at two nineteen, that the, uh, you know, twenty-four Reed or, or ninety-eight, however they refer it, so that axis is going to remain off of Nichols with the parking?
Um, I doubt that. I think that it more likely would be, um, accessed off of Reed Path, and I'm not sure which of those perfectly legal allowed common driveways, if you will, is how it's, uh, the uh, twenty-four Reed Path or ninety-eight
So my, my, my question related
How it's generally accessed now.
My question related to that is when I went to the property and I came off of Nichols Road, that area has a signed designation that that is the parking for ninety-eight? And when you look, and when you look at the plan, where you drive in and where you park is pretty much over where they're showing the existing septic system is for the twenty-four Nichols. Is that an H twenty system?
I don't know, and that would be an existing, um, uh, condition. As I've already indicated, the, um, there's a possibility that is a possibility that there'll be a new house there that would be closer to the corner of Nichols Road and and Seapit. I don't believe that the lot 220 conditions and the septic system is not proposed to be changed by this proposal. The structures are not proposed to be changed. I I simply don't think that how people access the middle property is.
That's what I'm trying to figure out because it doesn't, it doesn't show any access to the middle property on any of the plans. So that's what I was trying to figure out, the way it's, the way it's laid out now. Where it, where they all are on separate lots originally before the A and R changes. I assume eventually that middle property would be remodeled or changed at some point, just, I guess, due to age. Why not just handle a remodel there and reconfigure so that you don't have the encroachment on that side and leave the lots as is?
Actually, there was, first of all, the process of getting to where we've gotten today has probably been a matter of discussion by the Peterson family for a decade or more, what to do. One of the key decisions was that the family loves this middle house. It's actually called the Kurt's House, but they they wanted to keep it as is. They didn't want to make changes to it. You're absolutely right. Moving the house, picking it up and moving it was a possibility.
So where this is, where this is an A and R plan, couldn't you have done proposed lot lines that actually met setbacks? The 10 foot side setbacks?
No, not, not on the south west corner of that middle house because of the requirement that the lot that would include the location for the septic system for 108 be 40 feet wide. So no, we could not have a 40, and that itself required a special permit. We could not have, we, we didn't have 50 feet to the street. We have, we have what we have, 42 and a half. Now, as I pointed out in correspondence to the board, although we're 2.8 feet from the house to the property line, so that's considerably less than 10 feet. Although it's a whole lot better and not substantially more detrimental than the existing setback, nonconformance. But this is a very narrow house. And it's one story. In fact, the, to the ridge on that side of the property is 13.6 feet to the ridge. I, in correspondence, I believe I estimated it to be 12.6. I had Home晴光图measure it. I estimated that, I mean, I did measurements and then sort of subject like, like your previous case, I estimated high for the height. And I said in my correspondence to board, it was about 15 feet, nine inches. It turns out that it's only 15.3 feet high. But the portion closest is, is it's small, it's 69 square feet. 69 square feet of a house that's only 13 feet, 13.6 feet high is within 10 feet of of that that proposed line. It's smaller than a shed that would be allowed by Wright in the same location. Actually, it would be allowed three feet from the line. We're 2.8 feet of just a corner. I asked Home晴光图to calculate how much of how much nonconformance there would be within three feet of line to compare it to a shed, which, as I said, could be larger. It came back at less than one tenth of a square foot. Less than one tenth of a square foot. So it's really de minimis. But 2.8 feet versus 10 feet, that's not de minimis. But the impact of it, especially given it's against existing property in the same ownership being adjusted with the support of the neighbors to the south, both the properties, one of them family. There's nothing detrimental about this. There's nothing more detrimental about it, that's for sure.
That's all I have for now.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Scott, any questions?
None right now. I'm gonna let people smarter than me on this one go.
Okay, Scott, thank you. Mary, any questions?
No questions.
All right, James, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Attorney Almond, you said that these are all Land Court registered with Land Court, so. Trying to wrap my mind around this application. I think it's the first time in my time on the board that I've seen a request for a change of lot lines. So you mentioned it was in Land Court. It's, you know, court recognized registration of title and plans. So I'm, I'm curious how the building in the middle can be encroaching by nine feet when, when you have that recognition from the court.
There isn't any question, but that the lot lines are where the land court says they are, and those are the purple lines. I actually have and could share with you the land court plan from 1926, and you could, you could see that those are the lines, but they're accurately presented there. At some point, whether it was in 1950 or whether there was an extension of that, the, the house was built so that it goes across the line. That's the line, not just the land court. The assessors have that, as again, it's the land court. But the house is deemed to be legally preexisting nonconforming by Section 240-3B. That says that a structure not in compliance with the bylaw, more than 10 years old, has that status and can be changed. The case law says that refers to nonconformance with regard to lots in relation to structures are, have the same rights under Chapter 48, Section 6, in that here we have a situation where in a sense, the lot would be nonconforming. It's nonconforming only in relation, well, it's nonconforming because it's undersized. Otherwise, we have frontage, we have the width. But, but it's undersized, but these are protected lots, and I already referred to a section that allows us to adjust them. And these aren't vacant lots, of course, anyway. They, they're, they're built and under the FALMA zoning bylaw, they're all protected. They're not merged. But the case law, and I thought the question might come up about lots. In Paylet's versus Tisbury Zoning Board of Appeals, for instance, says that creating a distinction in treatment between a nonconforming structure and a nonconforming lot is one that analytically and practically should not be made. And in one of the cases that I did submit to you for a different purpose, and that is the Roma case, which points out that FALMA zoning bylaw can be more permissive than the state statute. But it refers to lots, lot protections offered by 48, Section 6. So you don't usually see cases in which it's the nonconformance related to the lot. And here, the nonconformance is the the lack of compliance with the zoning setback requirement of 10 feet. We just don't have it for this house. And the end result is that not only we're not going over the line and having no setback, we're ending up with an improvement of 2.8. There's no new nonconformance here. There's no additional nonconformance, but we are adjusting the lines around the house.
Understood.
Unusual case for you, but I think that, that it's like the, like the planning board actually said.
If, if I could pause you for just a minute, Attorney Almond, my apologies. We are at 9:30. The board's business does conclude at 9:30. We'd need a vote to extend not just this application, but for items that we do have on our open meeting agenda. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I propose we go to 10:15. We don't have to use it all.
All right, 10:15, and we certainly don't have to use every minute. Thank you, Ken. And seconded by, I think I heard Ed. Roll call vote, Ed. Ken?
Ed, Dan, Kieran, I.
Ken, Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert, you can I.
Scott?
Absolutely, Scott.
Mary?
Mary, Barry, I.
James?
James, Moore, side.
And TJ, hurry, I. All right. Thank you, Attorney Almond.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question for Attorney Almond before he goes.
Go, go right ahead.
Attorney Almond, it would, sir, I'm sitting here staring at, at this new proposal. And it certainly equals off into three parts, the shore access, doesn't it?
Can you say that once again, Scott?
I said it just, I, I'm sitting here staring at the, the, the plan on the screen, and I'm looking at, everybody's looking at the other side. I'm looking at the shore access and what it looks like is it's all been adjusted, so there's three equal parts for the shore.
No, actually, that's
I was wondering if that was part of the decision making.
The smallest of the lots that has on the plan that's been endorsed, our plan where that's this plan. The smallest of the lots is now at the corner of Seapit and Nichols. And that lot will no longer have any access unless it's granted, but it doesn't have waterfrontage. The middle lot, lot 219, which is the subject of this application and the southerly lot 218. They now have all of the frontage, and you'll notice there are two licensed peers. One goes with each property. Although it, the family has no present plans, and again, like our families, this is renowned to the third generation of ownership. It's expanded. They don't want to, they're not planning to sell any of this property. But by creating the smaller lot up at the corner of Seapit and Nichols, that's a property that could have a new house and could be sold. And if the Peterson family kept the two other properties, they would have control of the entire waterfront. As the plan indicates, the existing waterfront on the north, it's marsh. There is, by the way, and it shows on the plan just barely up across this northerly boundary, you'll see a dash line. That dash line is an existing easement area that runs down to the water so that the neighborhood can walk down to the water. And so there will continue to be water access over there, but.
So all three properties will continue to have equal, equal access to, to, to the water?
No, I mean, I can't say that because the property on the corner wouldn't have this, wouldn't have extensive waterfront. These two lots, but they will have a way to get the water. Furthermore, there's.
I, I understand, and, and I understand that your testimony is that they have no intention to sell, but you would have to agree that in the eventuality that they did sell, this, the way this is laid out would make it more attractive all three ways.
It will be more attractive. And it represents how the family would like to use the property and have less activity on the water.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions from the board at the moment? All right, seeing none, we'll turn it over to public comment. If there is anyone out there with a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon using the Zoom virtual software, and we will elevate you in a moment. All right, we do have one person. If we could please elevate David Bone. And if anyone else out there has a question, comment, or concern, go ahead and click the raised hand. Mr. Bone, you've been elevated. All you need to do is unmute yourself and turn on your video.
I have done that. I turned on my video. Yes, start video. Here we go. Sorry about the lighting. I'll be very brief, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm, I'm gonna butter to the project as well. I'm on 27 Nichols Road, just to the north of the 32 Nichols property. And I fully support what the Petersons are trying to do. I think this is a good solution for them and for the neighborhood, so I do support that. I look forward to the day, some point in the future, that, that house, the existing house at 32 being relocated, if it is rebuilt and, you know, moved away from the water bed, which would be, would be a nice gesture for the neighborhood. I have one simple question. And that was the, the reconfigured parcel 219 now has, would have access onto Nichols Road, which is a private way. And it's also appears to be in the flood zone, and I'm just trying to understand, not an area I'm familiar with. Is, is that portion buildable? Is it possible in the future to have a, a structure in the area to the right of what is the future parcel 32 or driveway or something like that?
Thank you, Mr. Bone.
Mr. Bone, you referred to oh, the 32. The area to the right between the existing 32 house and the water. The answer is that it would not be possible to put a house there. I think for setback reasons under Conservation Commission, you'd be within 50 feet of wetlands, which is a no touch zone. There has been thought about the possibility of having a footpath only that would extend over to to that easement that must be along your property. But I haven't considered the question of whether the middle property, that is, so the 98 Seapit Road property or 24 Reed Path has rights to Nichols Road or to, to go down that path. I just haven't given that any thought at all.
You answered my question, so thank you. And again, I, just for the record, I support what you're trying to do here for your clients.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bone. All right. Doesn't look like there's any other public comment. Are there any other follow up questions from the board?
Just for clarification, really, the only thing that we're being asked to consider here with this application is a special permit to allow the 2.8 foot side yard setback. Is that correct?
That's right.
All right. Any other questions from the board? All right. Attorney Almond, if you could stop sharing your screen, that would be fantastic. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's see. We have some board discussion or?
So I'd be, I'd be interested in an eventual continuance, just to go over all the information being presented tonight, but I would like to see all the accesses shown on the plan. And I understand that we are only looking at the middle one at the 2.8, but because this does affect all three parcels, I think we're, we do have the purview. I know my, I guess I'd go to Noreen to, to look at all three when we are deciding about the setback on the middle parcel. I guess I'd go to Noreen to, to look at all three when we are deciding about the setback on the middle parcel.
All right, thank you, Bob. I tend to agree with you, Bob. I, I, I think the, I think the issues of the application have been, you know, narrowed down through Attorney Amen's presentation, but I just need a little more time to, to review all of the materials in order to come to an informed decision. How's everyone else feel?
Appreciate some time.
Agreed.
All right. Ken, how do you feel?
Well, I mean, I, I think the issue is fairly straightforward, and it's a way vast improvement over what we had before.
Certainly is.
If you guys want more time, that's fine.
All right. Anyone else care to chime in? Attorney Amen?
I just want to say that if you're going to continue the hearing, I would ask that you keep the hearing open so that if there are questions, we'd have an opportunity to address them.
I, I think we certainly will. Absolutely. Noreen, in terms of the next available good date, what, what are we looking at?
You could continue to May 6. April 22 is swamped right now.
All right, May 6. Would anyone like to make that motion? Oh, Bob, you're muted. I think you're trying.
I just want to make sure we can get copies of plans that actually show the individual accesses to the different properties for that meeting.
All right, so.
Can I ask a question about what Mr. Dugan would like to see? We obviously can show the curb cuts in the areas that are presently available for parking. Is, is that all you're talking about?
So you had mentioned you weren't sure how number 98 was going to be accessed. And you've mentioned a couple different, that you could access it from Nichols, or there's a possibility you could still access it or read or even Seapit itself?
Yeah. I just, I mean, we can show the existing conditions, which as you know from your visit, allow for access as long as there's permission.
If that's, if that's the, yeah, if that's the.
I don't know, I don't know if there's any reason why it's important that we decide now how access will be in the future, particularly because of the possibility that existing access off of Nichols Road probably wouldn't be available if there was a new house built there, and particularly if, if that property was, was sold. I, I'm not sure that first, showing the existing parking areas and driveways, that's just getting Home Zimograph out there to do with it. I don't see why it's very important and it's a cost, but, you know, our goal is to get your approval. So yes, we can do that. But I don't showing existing conditions, which expresses that, I think is, we can do that. I don't know why, where.
The new, the new, the new lot lines on the middle lot are very tight when you get to the street. So if you're gonna do an access from Seapit Road, you may have a septic issue. If you're gonna keep the access from Nichols Road currently, unless that's an H20 system, you currently have an issue with that one. And there was a comment, there was a comment in engineering that they mentioned that they also would have liked to see some kind of an access actually noted on the plan. So whatever access that you would like to note, and I would leave that up to you. I'd just like to see how each property is actually being accessed. It's very confusing when you go to the property to figure out where you can access anything. I originally parked on the Reed Road and didn't know you could access it from Nichols until I walked the lot and saw the sign that the Nichols entrance is where the parking is notated for the middle house. So just some kind of a notation or something showing on the plan on either whatever's current or what you're gonna keep, you know, whatever works for you.
We'll put some stuff there. We can do that. I wouldn't want to see conditions that say since there's a shared driveway, that we need to record easements, for instance. You know, this is, this is family property. There are multiple ways actually to get to that middle property, really three ways to do it. And if it changes from time to time, if we have a driveway off of Seapit, we know that that requires a curb cut that despite what you've said, there's 100 feet of frontage shown there. And it's not, it's, it's not a particularly narrow lot. But providing the information, yes, we'll do that. And maybe that's helpful to have. We'll put some notes on the plan. And I just don't want to be restricted to the, the current way or ways that that property is accessed.
All right, thank you for that, Attorney Amen. All right, so we are looking at 5:06. Bob, did you make the actual motion? You're muted, Bob, sorry.
I'd make a motion to continue to May 6.
Very good. Is there a second? Second by Ed. Roll call vote. Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Hudson, I.
And TJ Hari, I passes unanimously. Attorney Amen, thank you for your time tonight. We will see you back here May 6.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, that concludes our public hearings. Moving on to voting the minutes, we have on paper March 11th and March 18th. March 11th?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes for March 11th, 2021.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll make a motion to select, to approve the minutes with March 18th, 2021.
All right. Ed, is there a second?
I'll do it again.
All right, Scott, we'll take them both. Motion to accept both minutes made by Scott, I'm sorry, made by Ed and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote, James?
James Morse, I.
Ken? Still muted, Ken.
There. Ken Forman, I.
Thank you, Ken. No worries. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Thank you, Mary. Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob. Scott?
Scott Hudson, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Minutes for March 11th and March 18th passed unanimously. Board discussion, is there anything? Any discussion to be had? Nope. All right. Board updates? Anything? Nothing? Future agenda items? All right, nothing for future agenda items either. And hey, we have a week off.
Maybe.
Maybe. Let's hope so. All right, so the next scheduled meeting, right? Next scheduled meeting is April 22nd. See everyone then. Meeting adjourned.
Bye, guys.
Bye.